I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, May 31, 2022, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:02 PM.
5:30.
I mean, 5:30.
Right.
Okay. 5:32 PM. Board members present, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Crystal Davila, Ms. Pau de Gonzalez-Husiliar, Mr. Casey Phelan, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, Marshall Kendrick and Kenny Fernandez. We'd also like to recognize Rebecca Bailey. Rebecca, thank you for being here at the law firm of Thompson and Horton, who's joining us this evening. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Invocation this evening will be given by Ms. Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Phelan. Sorry, I don't know why I wrote down Fernandez.
Would you please bow with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each day. We thank you for our school district, our employees, and our students, and we ask that you would be with us as we discuss the business of this district today. We ask that you would be especially with those who need our prayers tonight. Put your loving arms around them, let them know that you're there, and give them the sense that they need for peace. We ask that you would be with those who support our country, lead and guide and direct them as they go into harm's way each and every day. We ask that you would keep us in the center of thy will, lead and guide and direct us in each and everything that we do. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and termination of contract for professional personnel. 551.074 and 551.071 for the purpose of considering the evaluation of the superintendent and any amendments to the superintendent's contract and related actions. 551.071 to consult with the district's attorney concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene in open session as quickly as we can, as close to 7:00 PM as we can. The board is going to reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. First on the agenda, first of all, welcome to the board meeting. We're glad you're here. I know that many of you are here to recognize students or other people that are being recognized tonight. We certainly welcome you to the meeting. First is special recognition. Dr. Powell?
So, board members, we have a lot of great recognition to give tonight, not only to our students but also staff members. First, we're going to start with recognizing one of our most outstanding science lab teachers, Ritu Gandhi. And Mrs. Gandhi was named as this year's HEB Excellence in Education Leadership Award winner. And let me just tell you, this is a huge deal from teachers, of course nominated from all over the state. We're going to have Gladys Gonzalez, our PISD Science Specialist, come up and talk about how special this award is and how special this teacher is. But we were fortunate enough, since we were finalists for a large district, to celebrate with Ms. Gandhi and her husband, and it was amazing to be there when her name was called and, of course, hear her words of encouragement. So, Mrs. Gonzalez, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Powell and board members, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize and celebrate Ritu Gandhi. The HEB Excellence in Education Leadership category honors teachers with 10 to 20 years in the classroom based on passion and commitment to the teaching profession and innovation and creativity in the classroom. Out of a pool of 58 finalists, Ritu was selected as the overall winner. Additionally, Ritu is a recipient of the 2021 Shell Science Teaching Award. The program recognizes teachers who exhibit exemplary instructional methods and enthusiastically engage students in inquiry-based practices. Ritu serves as a science lab teacher at Morales Elementary. She organizes community events, including the after-school gardening and cooking clubs, the STEM family night, and Morales' STEM fair. She coordinates field trips to the Houston Energy Day every year, as well as the children's museum. Ritu is a member of the science curriculum writing team and the elementary STEM fair committee. We are very happy to celebrate Ritu for her accomplishments and for receiving the HEB's Excellence in Education Leadership Award. And now would I take you to Principal Ms. Jennifer Fuchan, come up here. Congratulations.
Ms. Gonzalez, did you say that she won $10,000 and won $10,000?
That is correct.
Ms. Gandhi, do you have family with you?
No, they couldn't come today.
Okay. Well, we're family, so congratulations.
They're glad to be a part of this family.
Next, we'd like to honor seven campuses this evening who are receiving the Tepsa Student Leadership Award and one campus who will be receiving the National Association of Elementary School Principals Student Council School of Excellence Award. So, I'm going to ask Amanda Kahn, PISD Advanced Academic Specialist, to come up, which she has already done, so thank you, Amanda, and help us recognize these campuses.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Powell and board members, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize and celebrate our student council programs across the district. Campuses across Pasadena School District have been developing student leadership teams. We are proud to announce seven of our campuses received the Tepsa Student Leadership Award more than any other district in the state. The Tepsa Student Leadership Award recognizes Texas student councils and student leadership teams for outstanding service to their schools and communities. Congratulations to our 2021-22 recipients. The campuses are Fred Roberts Middle School, Principal Tila Ligerata, Student Council sponsor Ashton Ramella, Doronda Preston, Brittany Sabinski, and Lindsey Price. Days of all a middle school. Yay. Principal Melissa Garza, Student Council sponsors, Dr. Gretchen Hester and Ryan Mitchell. And this was their first year, and they got this recognition. Isn't that fantastic? Marshall Kendrick Middle School, Principal Melissa Messenger, Principal Beras, Emily Ontiveras, Student Council sponsor Linda Smith. Linda, you want to go up this way and shake everybody's hands? Perfect. We also are recognizing Sparks Elementary, the principals Erica Salazar, and their sponsors are Dana Babano and Shari Morgan, and they were not able to be here tonight. Also, Jensen Elementary, Principal Judy Diaz, Student Council sponsor Corina Saldana and Ruby Reyes. Morales Elementary, yay, Principal Jennifer Candada, you've seen her a lot today, and sponsor Rebecca Cepeda. Thank you, Rebecca. And then we have Teague Elementary. Also winner, Teague Elementary Principal Lori Morris, and Student Council sponsor Stephanie We are also very excited to announce that Teague Elementary received the Student Council School of Excellence Award from the National Association of Elementary School Principals. Will you please join us in celebrating the seven campuses' student sponsors and principals for their hard work and leadership?
A lot of awesome work happening across the district. I'm going to bring up Shannon Rigosa next, our PISD Fine Arts Coordinator, and she's got some exciting achievements for our student artists.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Powell. Our district has had a number of visual arts students that have excelled in state and national art contests this year. The following is just a small sampling of the awards received by our students. The Visual Arts, UIL equivalent, is called VACE, and the students who enter are in good academic standing. This competition flourishes through the vertical track, beginning with the elementary grades with their contest called TEAM, to junior VACE for middle and intermediate, and culminates at the high school level referred to as VACE. This year, all of the 13 elementary programs participated in TEAM, having artworks reviewed by adjudicators looking for demonstration of critical thinking, aesthetic judgment, analysis, and creativity. So, with that being said, all three of the top 10% award winners in our district are students at Gardens and their art teacher Sandra Munoz. So, the first young lady is first grader Ashley Vesco, and following right behind her is second grader Saul Garcia. And Saul has an example of a trophy, and they each received gold medals. Would the parents of these students please stand and be recognized for their support? Now, I would like to recognize the following high school students who are at the opposite end of the spectrum and advanced to the highest level of VACE, which is competing at state. There were 19 students representing PISD. It's the most we've ever had qualify from our district. As I call your name, if you'll please step forward to accept your certificate. From Tagler Career Center, we have Joanna Fraga. Memorial High School, we have Chelsea Amaya. Olivia Casas. Rebecca Macias. Edicia Ilankivkole, sorry, I messed up your last name. We also had students from Dobie, and South Houston students are Zoe Garcia. Rayburn High School is Stefania Longoria. And then there were five students of those 19 that received the top 10% in the state, earning a gold medal. The ones present here tonight are Naveya Conchas. And Naveya is from Pasadena High. And from Memorial High School, we have Nikki Thomas. We would like to extend our gratitude to the board, district, school administrators, and the community for your support of visual arts. All of this could not be accomplished without the support and dedication of the art teachers. And I saw a number of you, hopefully you're in the room, and you can wave and be recognized. And if there's administrators up there that support the art program as well, so thank you so much. Lastly, but certainly not least, we would like to recognize the parents of these students. Please stand and be recognized.
So, we're going to move on to Tonya Hager, who is our PISD Director of Career and Technical Education, and she has some great news coming out of our CTE department. Zeke, I could see is with her to run the show.
He's my clicker, yes.
All right. That's important.
Yes, it is. All right. Good evening, everyone, and good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. It is an honor to be here to recognize these individuals who, under the guidance of their dedicated advisors, have excelled and represented their schools and our district in a number of national and international career and technical education competitions. As you know, CTE organizations are an integral part of the educational process, as they are an extension of the classroom, and they allow students to build leadership skills and network with professionals in business and industry. And this year, I am proud to say that we had a total of 46 students advance to the national or international level of competition, and many of them, as you can hear from the hallway, are with us here tonight. So, I would like to begin by recognizing the Business Professionals of America students from Sam Rayburn High School. Oh, yeah, okay. These three students advanced to the National BPA Competition, which was held in Dallas at the beginning of the month. They are Sakuro Gutierrez, who competed in interview skills, Isa Lopez competed in health leadership, special topics, and Dev Masaria competed in health insurance and medical billing. Their advisors are Mr. Mahaba Valam, Ms. Billy Pardon, and Ms. Teresa Zorabia. And we are getting their beautiful pictures up on the screen right now. So, congratulations to these three students. We also had several of our DECA students advance to international competition, and these are our future marketing professionals. They competed in Atlanta, Georgia at the end of April. So, from Dobie High School, we have Daniela Garza, who competed in hotel and lodging management, and Lizbeth Rodriguez, who competed in hospitality and tourism professional selling. Their advisors are Ms. Amber Allen and Mr. Jeff McKnight. From Pasadena Memorial High School, we have DECA students, Atina Stuartay and Abigail Gonzalez, who competed in the financial services team event, and their advisor is Mr. Tim Boyd. HOSA, the Student Organization for Future Health Professionals, had one student advance to international competition this year, and that is Cory Phillips from Pasadena Memorial High School. Cory advanced by placing top in the state in the healthcare issues event, and she will be traveling to Nashville, Tennessee this June for international competition. Her advisors are Dr. April Barker, Dr. Christina Garcia, and Ms. Laura Trevino. Welding students from Lewis Career and Technical High School will be traveling to Atlanta, Georgia this June for their national competition. Sergio Cervantes earned his spot at nationals by placing first in the state in individual welding, and the team of Raoul Duran, Brian Piccon, and Jose Miguel Ponce Mora won for welding fabrication. Their proud advisor is Mr. Brian Suarez. TAFI, the Organization for Future Educators, will be holding their national competition in Washington, DC next month, and we will have students from Lewis Career and Technical High School as well as Pasadena Memorial High School there to represent our district. From Lewis CTHS, we have Eliza Becerra and Liliana Martinez, who competed in project visualized service. And also from CTHS, we have Mabel Self, who competed in children's literature pre-K. And she's actually holding, I think, the book that she wrote called Jeffrey the Giraffe, and I have to say, it is pretty phenomenal. Their advisors are Ms. Stephanie Karns, Ms. Jennifer Martin, and Ms. Vanessa Martin. Our TAFI national qualifiers from Pasadena Memorial include Laura Alvarez and Erica Diaz-Longoria, who competed in the Inside Our School competition, and their proud advisors are Ms. Krista Brazino and Ms. Jackie Vita. The next group I would like to recognize is the VEX Robotics Team from Lewis CTHS. This group comprised of five students advanced to the VEX World Robotics Championship that was held in Dallas earlier this month. The team members include Raoul Diaz, Evan Frostrow, Sophia Garray, Billy Junkin, and Tu Pham. Their advisors are Ms. Kayla Platt and Mr. David Scarsella. Will the advisors, all of you hardworking advisors of these students, will you please stand to be recognized at this time? And students, give them a hand, too. If there are any parents in the room and your student is standing up here, please stand to be recognized. We know that this is a family effort, so we'd like to recognize you as well. Students, congratulations again, and parents and students from this group, if you guys can make your way to the lobby for pictures, we would like to bring in the next group of national qualifiers. The last group I would like to recognize is the Archery Team from Pasadena Memorial High School. This group advanced to the national competition for the National Archery in the Schools Program, which was held in Salt Lake City, Utah at the end of April. This very talented group advanced in both 2D and 3D targets and helped maintain the winning tradition of this very successful program. The team consists of, and they're flowing through here, Chelsea Amaya, Erin Avila, Angel Valderas, Dean Blevins, Aiden Inceso, Edgar Garcia, Haley Grafe, Eric Guerra, Bradford Husband, Alejandro Jaimez, Eric Johnson II, Elena Lopez Cuerta, Zayla Martinez, Guillermo Mata, Caesar Monares, Christine Nguyen, Tristan Olivo, Jeremiah Rivera, Christopher Rosas, Jacob Serna, Shayla Stringer, Giovanni Trejo, Francisco Valdez III, and Aurora Williams. Can you guys imagine waiting on a Southwest flight with this group? Where's everyone going? I know, right? Their advisors are onstage with us as well, Ms. Lori Ovin and Mr. Sunny Mills, and I would like to give a shout out to Coach Mills. He actually was just recently named the Professional Educator of the Year for the State of Texas by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. All right, proud parents, where are you? Proud parents in the room, please stand up to be recognized. Congratulations, students. You and your parents are welcome to go in the lobby for pictures. And before I end, I have to thank all of our high school principals. I know Steve Fleming from CTHS is here, as is Chad Phillips, his assistant principal, Jeremy Richardson from Memorial, Janet Pearson, our CTE AP, Vanessa Reyes from Rayburn, and Jorley Thomas from Dobie. Thank you guys so much. And who else is here? Laura Gomez from PHS and Andrea Winkie. Thank you all so much for your support of CTE and board members and Dr. Powell. None of this would be possible. These opportunities that students are getting are life-changing, and it could not happen without your support, so thank you so very much.
As long as he looks the right way when he shoots that arrow, we're good. Well, board members, we're going to switch gears a little bit on you. We're going to go from archery to swimming. How about that? So, aquatic swimmers and divers is who we're going to talk about next. And we have the awesome, awesome Robert Kelly, Aquatic Center Manager, and his wonderful wife, athletics, PHS head, swimming and diving coach. So, both of them are just amazing individuals and work daily with our children across the district, so I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening. I'd like to present, we have a lot of non-honors this tonight with the swimmers and divers from Rayburn, Pasadena Memorial, who were named for the All-State team or the All-America team. So, we're going to present these tonight. First, from Sam Rayburn High School, made academic All-State from the Texas In-This Classic Swimming Coaches Association, Mitzi Gonzalez. Second, from Pasadena High School, named to the Academic All-State team and also was the District 2268 Diving MVP, Emily Lopez. Also, from Pasadena Memorial High School, All-State, Madison Arcizo. From Pasadena Memorial, Janaye Florid. This young lady is receiving three. She was named to the Academic All-State team for the Texas In-This Classic Swimming Coaches Association, the Texas Girls Coaches Association, and the Texas High School Coaches Association, Also, from Pasadena Memorial, named to the Texas Swimming Coaches Association, Texas Girls Coaches Association, and Texas High School Coaches Association, in addition to being named to the National All-America Team for swimming and diving, from Pasadena Memorial, And last but certainly not least, this is her second time to get the award. She's named three spaces, Texas Girls, Texas High School, Swimming Coaches. She was the district's MVP in swimming for 2268, and she was also named to the National All-America Team for swimming, Rachel Delangel. Rachel, with swimming, she signed her letter of intent last week to swim at Division Two Watcha Top Baptist University Tigers, right, Rachel? And that's all I have. Thank you.
And we have parents of these individuals. Please stand, these lovely ladies up here, our swimmers, of parents. I know it takes a lot of time to get them to practice, and thank you. And thank you, Coach Kelly and Coach Kelly. And thank you, Coach Kelly and Coach Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Powell.
Awesome.
This is always exciting. Congratulations, students. Congratulations, parents. Congratulations, educators. At this time, if you were here to recognize one of these students and you would like to leave, this is your permission to do so. If you want to stay, we also welcome you to stay in the meeting. Next, we're going to do public comments according to policy BED Local related to items on the open agenda, open session portion of the agenda. This portion of public comment is limited to speakers who are addressing items listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual student and/or employee should seek resolution through District's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy, DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others, and in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comment portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. Remember, this admonition goes for positive or negative comments. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Phelan, will you time us, please? And indicate to the individuals that they have one minute left, and then when their time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, Ms. Duran, you are speaking on the Lomax Library. That's what it says. Financial Section X12.2, Lomax Library.
I'll let you know when you have a minute and also 30 seconds.
So just to make sure, so it's actually regarding the facilities construction, the bond proposal for $50 million?
Is that an agenda item?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So over the last few months, a fellow Pasadena ISD constituent has been asking questions regarding the bond, but was continuously met with, once the bond passes, we can, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, the bond passed earlier this month, plus the District has spent a lot of time gathering all of the information for it, per previous comments made. So I was a little disappointed, no, I was disappointed, to see that on Exhibit A, on the second item of today's financial section, it does not provide any numbers. It was necessary to provide numbers for the bond itself, so it's only logical that they be included in a $50 million proposal that is being voted on today. And, you know, again, kind of going back to the transparency, et cetera, et cetera, that I talked about last month, you know, all we're really asking is to just start providing numbers. I know that right now, there's, you know, things are fluctuating, et cetera, but, you know, in order to come up with a number for the bond, you did have to have estimates. So it's only, it's only logical. Now, as the procurement process for the bond begins, we're, again, asking for transparency and inclusion. So I was looking over the purchasing manual for the facilities and construction, and one line caught my attention. So in Page Five, under Contract Selection Criteria, it states, "In determining the award of a contract, the District may consider," per Line Four, "the impact on the ability of the District to comply with the rules relating to historically underutilized businesses." So as a small business advocate, I'm asking you today, what is the District's policy for women and minority-owned contracts? What is the current breakdown of contracts to minority and women-owned businesses? What are you doing to ensure that these upcoming procurement opportunities are available to everyone, outside of the minimum requirement of posting the notices online and sharing it with the local chamber? What are the steps that you're really taking? And how can local organizations support and enhance your efforts through certification, info sessions, et cetera? You might think that I'm here continuously asking questions and all of that.
I want to be an ally.
Thank you, Ms. Duran.
So I just want to apologize for our malfunctioning. I don't know what's going on here, but we're going up and down throughout the student presentations, and so I want to apologize for that. But as far as the agenda item, I know that we will bring every item related to the bond here to the board table for your approval, once those purchases are made. So all the Bond Council is asking tonight that we're able to start progress to show our community that overwhelmingly approved the bond, that we are ready to get started. And then, once we go out for the bonds, we can pay ourselves back. So that's just an estimated amount because of timelines related to selling the bonds is unclear at this time. We're looking at the market and getting involved in that process. But again, every project will be brought here and will be, of course, seen by our public as well as our board to make a decision yes or no on.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion? I move that we approve the Consent Agenda. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. And we're to the Budget Workshop.
So Board Members, this is not going to be a long budget workshop because it's, of course, a part of a regular meeting, but I wanted you to start looking at the projections of the revenues and, of course, the expenses that we have for the 2223 school year. And for asking you to take action tonight on employee raises, I thought it was really important that we spend some time on this. So I'll just let you know, and this is a review for all of you, but we start in January talking about next year's budget. We start, of course, the process, talking about the wants and needs and desires of not only the campuses, but the departments as well. We also start looking very detailed toward our revenues, whether that's, of course, our top 10 taxpayers and what changes might be happening there. I know you're aware through the news, there's a concern about Lion Del Bacell and their closing of their Pasadena plant, but it's also the revenues related to our state and, of course, our tax collections as well. So that means there's always a possibility that those could change or even drop before the budget's approved or increase before the budget's approved. But for now, we're giving you an estimate of, of course, those numbers. And of course, looking at for 2223, estimating our revenue collection rate at 98%. This brings in additional $5.4 million over last year. After all the budgets, again, were turned in and their wish list was made, I call that everything in the kitchen sink. It was right at a $65 million deficit budget, but nobody, lose your breath or let your heart get out of rate because this is everything that everyone wants. It does not mean that, of course, we're going to send you a budget that looks like that. So that's where we roll up our sleeves and start looking at, what do we have to have to meet the programs and the strategic plan that we have in place for our district? We know we're dealing with lower ADA, that's Student Attendance, that's across the state. We normally run at 95%. It's been lower all year. COVID has done that to us across the state. And even though the state held us harmless for four grading periods, they did not do that for two of this year. And we're not sure what their plans are for next year. One way to solve that, just in my opinion, is to base that on enrollment rather than attendance in the future with state funding, but that is not the decision they've made at this time. So again, we knew we couldn't bring you a $65 million deficit budget, so we started cutting. We first looked at department budgets. We are going to show you tonight, and you have in front of you, a $6.5 million deficit budget. This includes the proposed raises that we're asking you about tonight. It includes some cuts that we've made to not only budgets but to personnel, not through riffing or anything of that nature, but through attrition. You know that we're losing about $16 million in state revenue, but that loss is due to the increase in our tax base. We know home values have gone up, so you're kind of raising one and losing the other. And then, of course, we look at our student enrollment. Our business office stays up to date on the state template, so I appreciate the work they do, provided by Omar Garcia, and that template continues to change. So it's been a challenge, to say the least, and we'll continue to monitor that as we bring you future budgets. Federal revenue, some good news is up by about $3 million for indirect cost on grants. But in the expense category, and of course, you have columns that show you this on your budget in front of you, we have projected a 5% raise for teachers, TO7 and TO8, and then a 3% of the midpoint for the rest of the staff in this budget draft. So again, before we ask you to take action on that, we just wanted to show you an overall picture of where we're at, where we're working toward. Campus allocations are based on student enrollment, so that's pretty simple. Budgets for departments, however, are zero-based budgeting. They start every year, starting from scratch what their needs are, and then we go through that process, having discussions with those departments. We did see a need to make a cut, again, to every department by 1% to help balance the budget, and that's shown in there on your copy in front of you. And as we move through the next couple of months and we have future budget workshops, you'll see some of the budget process play out as far as hopefully increasing revenue and cutting expenses to get this better balance. But again, we'll have some time to talk about that throughout June and July before you have to take action on the budget fully in August. So we are prepared for questions, but we thought it was important to bring this to you tonight before we talk about raises.
Very good. Anyone have any questions, Dr. Powell?
What do the workshops look like, the budget workshops?
So we just bring forward our budget draft, and if there's a new program or, of course, new staffing, we go through those in an itemized way. If you have any questions, of course, you get that in your board packet in advance. You can ask questions and get answers to those and then make decisions or take action as we see fit. Sometimes we'll approve personnel so that we can get them hired prior to the August date, that's required for approving the budget. But this year, I'm not proposing any additional staff at this time with our enrollment as it is. There will be no action on those additional positions, per se. It might be taking action on cutting or reclassifying or reorganizing, perhaps.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Powell. Any other questions? Let's move on to the Personnel Section, and I'm going to call on Mr. Phelan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move to approve Addenda Page A through F.
Second. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Phelan, will you introduce those lucky people?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Divya Antoni, are you here? Please, there you are. Anthony, Anthony, I'm sorry. I knew I was going to mess one of them up. We're asking for the approval of Ms. Anthony, Licensed Specialist for, I'm looking for the school...
School Psychology.
School Psychology. That's why I keep y'all around. You have any family or friends?
Yes.
Your fiance, awesome. Well, congratulations and welcome to the family. Second, Ms. Haley Jones. Ms. Jones, there you are, way in the back. Ms. Jones is being approved for Educational Diagnostician. Yes, family, friends, coworkers? Well, congratulations and welcome to the family. Not in attendance tonight is Ms. Vanessa Ramirez. She's being approved for Licensed Specialist. So we want to send out a warm welcome to her and welcome her to the family. Ms. Charrel Gillum, are you at? There you are. We're asking for approval for her at the illustrious Jackson Intermediate to be an Assistant Dare I ask, you have family and friends here?
Yes, I do. I have my parents, father, mother.
Oh, precious.
I have my sisters, nieces, nephews. I have a lot of friends in PHS, and then I speak for my family.
Congratulations and welcome to the family.
You're going to have to be a little bit more outgoing.
Ms. Karen Pena. We're asking to approve Ms. Pena for the Assistant Principal job at Fred Roberts Middle Do you have family with you?
I do. I have my other half, too, there. My parents, Ben and Diana Pena. My sisters, Diana and Jacqueline Pena. We're all products of Pastor and I, and Jesus.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations.
I also have two very impactful professors from the University of Houston, Dr. Bush and Dr. Locan.
Oh, wow.
Awesome.
I want to thank my former family at Kendrick, at Williams. I want to thank my new Roberts family, Mr. Thomas Guerrero. Thank you for picking up the young lady. I'm going to make you proud, Mr. Fred Roberts. I am very excited to work with you, and I look forward to working together to keep the great things that are happening at Roberts.
Congratulations, welcome to the family, and you get Fred. Fred is your responsibility. And last but surely not least, Mr. Jeremy Purvis. Where are you at, Jeremy? Interesting little factoid is he flew here from Florida just for this, and as soon as we're done, he's flying back.
Oh, wow.
So Mr. Purvis is definitely asking for approval for the Assistant Principal position at Pasadena Memorial High School.
Awesome.
Family, friends, anybody here?
I have a wife, six kids are here, and several educator friends.
Fantastic. Congratulations and welcome to the family.
And you got the right color on. Great.
Congratulations and welcome to the family.
This is always exciting, but if you would like to leave now that your loved one or whoever you've come for has been introduced, are you free to do so?
You need to catch a plane.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Be sure to take Fred with you.
Haley, I worked with her. I was like, I was about to be like, but she changed her name, so I didn't realize the connection. I was like, Haley? Yeah, we've been in hearings together. She's a great hire. I've seen her in action. That is so great. Yeah.
Excuse me, but this is the part, when I said the position, I said, man, I wish I could go. Wish this could come true.
Bye, Fred.
Fred.
Bye.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to ask Kevin any questions before you go?
He's right there.
Now, I'll wait for your turn. I had to do that. Y'all actually have a good question.
Okay, we're going to move on to consideration and possible approval of the Superintendent's summative evaluation.
So move.
No, just a minute.
I move to approve the Superintendent's summative evaluation as discussed in Executive Session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion? We know we've got a good one, so we're going to keep her. Thank you. No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of amendment to Superintendent's contract and related action.
Madam President, I move to amend the Superintendent's contract and related actions as discussed in Executive Session.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, next is consideration and possible approval of a one-time employee retention stipend paid in two installments in the amount of $1,500 for teachers and $1,000 for all other employees for the 2022-2023 school year.
So move.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Discussion? Hearing... Go ahead.
One thing I want to...
One thing I wanted to say about this stipend is that I wish we could have announced it earlier so that teachers will sign in, including other personnel here in Pasadena ISD. Just a suggestion.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a 5% midpoint salary increase for employees on the salary schedule TO-7 and TO-8, and 3% of midpoint salary increases for all other employees for the 2022-2023 school year.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion.
So, Board members, I'm just going to pass this out, and I apologize for not giving it to you sooner. Sometimes y'all always ask about other districts. Not all other districts have announced yet, but we wanted to get on here as quick as we could. Like Ms. Davaletta said, it's important to let your employees know as soon as possible what you're trying to do in the area of salary and any other benefits. So I've collected as much information as people will tell us. People like to hold it close to the vest, but Ms. Lopez has been working with her counterparts in other districts, so we're excited about announcing this if it gets approved to our staff and then moving forward throughout the budget process, and we'll keep discussions open.
That's awesome.
I would, I just want to add that I'm really, really grateful for our teachers and our staff, and just know that advocated, we've all advocated for you, and I know Dr. Powell's worked hard and our staff on trying to get this ready to go for today, so hopefully this is something that's going to be good for everyone.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. I'm going to ask again, we all need to voice vote. Your voice needs to be heard, so speak up and let your voice be heard, yea or nay, but we need to hear your voice. Consideration and possible approval of CSP number 22P-004 LP Pharmacy Benefit Management Services to Caremark PCS Health LLC, CBS Pharmacy, Inc., under our self-funded medical plan.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of CSP number 19P-027 LP Contract Renewal, Year Four of Five, with Gallagher Benefit Services for Employee Benefits and Insurance Consulting Services.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion.
So Maggie Parker is here from Gallagher, right over here to my right, but as you know, this is year four of five.
Maggie, thank you for what you do in Gallagher, for what you provide us every single year. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Certified Personnel is for information only, as well as Support Personnel, and so we're going to move to the Educational Section to provide the School Health Advisory Committee SHAC report for 2021-2022, and this is for information only. Elise, are you doing this?
Yes, me.
Okay, you're on.
Oh, we don't have technology. Poor thing. She practiced, she had this beautiful eyewitness.
You did.
So you're just going to sing and dance?
Funny you say that. I was going to say, I just told Ms. McCullough that Amber's going to do it. So there is no video, but I will read you what we have. Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Powell. My name is Elise Neff, and I'm the Coordinated School Health Specialist. I serve as the co-chair for the SHAC along with Amber McNish and Carmen Hernandez, a parent with students at Keller and Sam Rayburn High School. I'm here tonight to give the School Health Advisory Council Board Report. The School Health Advisory Council is required by law. It states that the Board of Trustees of each school district shall establish a local School Health Advisory Council to assist the district in ensuring that local community values are reflected in the district's health education instruction. All five meetings were held face-to-face this year. The meeting dates and times, as well as the minutes for each meeting, can be found on the Pasadena ISD SHAC page. The SHAC members are composed mostly of parents as well as community members, and the SHAC is supported by district staff. The SHAC continued efforts to create a diverse membership group this year by utilizing campus wellness teams to invite a parent from each campus to serve on the SHAC. In 2020-2021, the focus of the SHAC was on the Pasadena ISD's response to COVID-19. This year, the SHAC focused, I'm sorry, the SHAC focused on ensuring that local community values are reflected in the district's health education instruction in educating the whole child. Despite the challenges that we faced this school year, we are so proud of the health and wellness programming the School Health Advisory Council supported in the 2021-2022 school year. You can find a full report of the SHAC activities for the year on the official SHAC Board Report that you have in front of you, and this is where I would say, and this is where we watched the fun video because that was all boring, but Amber's going to dance. No, we do have a video, but we can send that out for you guys to watch later.
Simulating, I'll put it in their weekly wind down.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the work that you do. It's a lot more than get-fit jog, a whole lot more. Thank you, really. Y'all do a great job.
Absolutely outstanding.
Okay, next is consideration and possible approval of naming the library at Carter Lomax Middle School as the Norma Penny Library in an amount not to exceed $1,728.30.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion.
This is a very fitting, deserved honor, and I'm so glad to see that it's been brought forward.
Very special. Other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
We've got some of our Lomax family back there, so they're very excited.
All who knew Norma knew what a special, special lady she was, and she loved those kids more than anybody I've ever seen, so she is missed, and this is a fitting tribute. Next is considerate, okay, Karen, I've got your weepies. Consideration and possible approval of the Subscription Renewal Contract with ESC Region 11 for Discovery Education Streaming for the 2022-2023 school year at the cost of $96,185.70.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion.
Where is Region 11?
So Region 11 is Melissa's Pointup North. I know where 10 is. Fort Worth.
Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Optional Flexible School Day Program, OFSDP, for Community School. Jennifer Capra has a presentation, am I correct?
Well, she did. She had a great video, and she had a lot of good things, but we're not working right now, so Jennifer, you go and come up, as well as Board members. Remember, this is the new requirement. Before, we would do a community hearing, and so Jennifer visited us earlier this year, and this is the second part of that. If you have any questions or if you have any discussion in order to get this approved, that's required now as part of the rules related to this grant, or waiver, I should say. So do you want to share just some of the facts that you would have seen in the video, graduates or other things?
Yes, so sorry about that. We had a really great video, so that you could hear it, like you said.
Like you said, in a more interesting format. It was a video of our students telling you some great things about our program. So I'm going to need the link to send to the Board when you get it.
I will send that to you, yes, ma'am. But also, I brought a couple of people from our program, our Assistant Principal, Randy Elliott here, and one of our part-time teachers, Andrew Winterly, the halftime voice of Pasadena High School, has come out of retirement to help with our ESRA students, getting them finished up. But most of you know Community School is our dropout prevention and recovery campus for the district, and we work with those kids who've encountered some sort of obstacle along the way, sometimes short-term, sometimes long-term, to get them across the stage of graduation. One of the things I want to make sure to share with you tonight is that our projected, and I say projected because our school year goes all the way until the end of June, our projected graduation this year is higher than we have ever had. Our highest year prior to this was right before COVID at 226 graduates. This year, we're projected 240 graduates. And even more important than that is that our graduation rate is projected to be over 92%.
Oh, wow.
So to put that in perspective, we have a 100% at-risk population on our campus, and that graduation rate rivals the graduation rates at the comprehensive high schools. So we can't do it without the wonderful support of you guys. The Optional Flexible application makes it possible for us to offer flexible scheduling for the students while still receiving ADA compensation.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jennifer. So do I hear a motion to approve the Flexible School Day Program?
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion.
Jennifer, I just think this is one of the most important programs that our district provides for our students. Thank you so much for your staff and all that you do. It's just amazing to go over there and see how dedicated these students are to achieving the goal that they've not been able to reach otherwise. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Memorandum of Understanding between the Pasadena Independent School District and the Harris County Juvenile Board.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval authorizing Pasadena ISD personnel to enter into multiple contracts with the Texas Parks and Wildlife in order to ensure that the district may continue to provide education courses at the high school level in coordination with the Texas Parks and Wildlife.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of amendment to the 2022-2023 practicum internship affiliation agreement with the University of Houston Clear Lake for two BCBA graduate assistants for $32,448.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of agreements between Pasadena Independent School District and the San Jacinto Community College District for a school-based practicum for nursing and eye care technology students.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion.
Yes.
Go ahead.
What schools are we talking about?
I was looking all around the room. Where is April? We were good.
For the nursing students, it'll be mostly elementary. For the optometry students, it'll be all grade levels. They'll come to us already certified as vision and hearing screeners. They need the hours, and we need the help screening our kiddos. I have offered to certify them in hearing so that they can do both sensory screenings, but hopefully every school in our district will benefit from the extra help.
It's a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing how successful it is, and thank you for helping with it.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of an inter-local contract agreement between Harris County Department of Ed and Pasadena Independent School District for tuition and educational services at the Academic and Behavioral School East for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $216,350.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for a South Houston student and teacher to attend the Congressional Art Contest Awards and compete for national scholarships sponsored by Representative Sylvia Garcia in Washington, DC at a cost of $1,700.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for a Pasadena Memorial High School student and teacher to attend the Congressional Art Contest Awards and compete for national scholarships sponsored by Representative Brian Babin in Washington, DC at a cost of $1,700.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of four esports students and one coach from Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School to travel to Orlando, Florida to compete in EGF National Championships at Walt Disney World, June 16th through 21st, in an amount not to exceed $8,000.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion.
I have a question. They're going to be there for five days, and with the cost of everything, is this $8,000 going to be the total, or is our school implementing some? I think that this is just so important for these kids, but I don't, I want to make sure with the cost of everything that they're going to be able to participate.
They're coming to the mic, so you can hear.
Yes, ma'am. So one of the things that we need to share with you is, we really weren't prepared. This is our second year to compete in the EGF, and so to have students who've made it to the national competition in only our second year. We had over 100 students who tried out for our esports teams, so we have three different levels of competition. The four students that are going this year are individual students. They are competing in Super Smash Brothers. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. So we have, we have two team competitions, Rocket League and Overwatch, and then we have the individual student competition, which is Super Smash Brothers. Mr. Casey Cruz is our coach, and so throughout the year, as they competed, they continued to advance, they continued to win, and we have a student, we have two students, we have a number one and number two students in the region, so we have a student who has a really good chance of being the national champion.
Wonderful.
And so the, the competition that they're attending is a tournament format, and so we had to put all five days on there because we're not, we're not sure. If they continue to win and he continues to advance, he could be there all those days. Certainly, if something more to happen, he didn't, then they would be able to, they'd become, able to come home earlier, so we tried to figure in the cost. We're also anticipating some scholarship support from the Electronic Gaming Federation. We've not received that yet, you know, checks in the mail, so we're anticipating some, some help in offsetting those costs, so we tried to give you, here's kind of, here's the most that it might be.
I have a question.
Does that answer the question?
I'm not allowed to ask questions.
Yes, you are.
How do you coach Super Smash Brother? I just, I'm dying to know.
Only a guy named Casey can do it.
Well, I'm a coach, really. I get some room to play, they practice, I don't, I don't really play the games.
Do you enjoy it?
Do I enjoy it? I enjoy watching the kids have fun. I mean, they really enjoy it. I enjoy the aspect of it, but as far as coaching, I don't, I don't have the great advice for them because, you know, they're experts, you know. They're teaching me more than I'm teaching them when it comes to... You know, they're teaching me more than I'm teaching them when it comes to stuff.
That's awesome. I love hearing that.
They're playing at ESPN's Wide World of Sports, and this is going to be televised, and they're going to have commentators there.
Wow.
I'll send updates on that when I get it. It's going to be on ESPN3, I think, so.
It's a real hook for the kids.
We tried to see if this was going to be a virtual competition, and they were very clear that this is an in-person national champion.
It was virtual last year.
It was virtual last year.
Well, there should be some ESPN money to put into this if we need any more.
I'll ask him when I get done.
These are great kids, and oh, I'm just, I'm so excited for them.
Oh, thank you. I'm excited, too.
Thank you for what you do.
Oh, of course.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Congratulations. Consideration possible adoption of a board resolution declaring an emergency and authorizing employee compensation and purchases in response to the fire at South Shaver Elementary on May 24th, 2022.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Student achievement for information only. Look through your board book, and you will see even more, lots more than we even recognized tonight. So we certainly congratulate the students. We congratulate their sponsors, their teachers. You know, it takes a village, and y'all are part of that village, and we thank you for everything that you do. Moving to the financial section. Consideration possible approval of the budget amendments for April 2022.
So move. Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a resolution declaring intention to reimburse project expenditures in an amount not to exceed $50 million.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Any discussion?
This is just what we were talking about earlier when we had public comments. This is just a number, a placeholder. This is not something we expect to hit, but again, it depends on our bond sales and that timing as well. But we want to get started and show our community we're serious about putting some of those improvements in, in a responsible manner. I do want to say, since we're in the financial section, our new CFO is here, Ben Poppy. He's heard about plane crash in his short tenure and now school fire. So welcome to Pasadena ISD. That is all about that item.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration, we're moving to the operations section. Consideration possible approval of an HVAC testing and air balancing tab services agreement to National Precision Air LLC for the new Thompson Intermediate School replacement project in the amount of $115,850.
So move. Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of final change order number 01 for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project in the credit amount, which we always love, $122,101.23.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Phelan. Was that you, Ms. Fusiliere?
Thank you.
And seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of final change order number 03 for the Pasadena High School Culinary Arts Kitchen Renovations Project in the credit amount of $6,288.45.
So move. Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, number four, has been pulled. Per Kevin, I guess this will come back at a later date, and so we're moving to number five, which is consideration of possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 17, for the new administration building replacement project in the credit amount of $44,050.
So move. Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Is Kevin, Mr. Fornow? So they're removing the, it says delete 45-minute fire rating, just a little bit. Can you explain that to me?
Sure. Yeah, there's three items involved in this credit. All three of them were not required. The raided doors were not required by code, so it was just an extra that could be deleted.
Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number 001 for the new Thompson Intermediate School replacement project in the amount of $766,793.
So move. Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion?
Could you, Mr. Fornow, could you explain this, please?
Sure. This is required by the city of Pearland for a westbound turn lane into the site, which is common for a new construction site. If you're generating the need on the site for additional paving, then you pay for that. We negotiated the price back and forth with the city. They originally wanted us to widen a lot of Hughes Road, which would have been probably double this cost, so we've got it down to just the turn lane and right in front of the school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We knew this in the beginning when we acquired the new--
We figured, living out there, you know there was a need for them to do that, the city, to do that prior to the neighborhoods and school being put in. I guess the lane would be similar to May Smith. I mean, how, is there one project you could say is like the turn lane, or?
There is a turn lane for May Smith, but we have a lot of projects where we're required to do a turn lane.
So you'll see it at a lot of our campuses. This is definitely a good answer. Want to keep that traffic off the street.
Absolutely.
Keep it flowing.
Absolutely. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of construction contract to Automated Logic for the Building Management Control Systems BMCS Upgrades Group One Project in the amount of $3,063,000 and fund balance request of $657,587.
So move. Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion?
Kevin, you might want to explain to them how this is going to be monitored and it's going to save the district.
Yes, this is a control system. That's what the BMCS stands for. It monitors the HVAC system for the school, dampers, heating, air conditioning. We monitor that remotely so we can control that without having to go to the campus, but it's pretty standard for all of our projects to be on a control system like this.
Thank you.
So any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of construction contract to Division One Construction for the Guidance Center conversion to Nutrition Services Project in the amount of $6,750,780 and fund balance request of $815,845.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion?
So as you know, board members, when you first saw this, it was definitely a lesser amount that you approved for us to move forward on when we went out to bid. This is federal funds being brought into this because of food services or child nutrition being part of it, so there's some reason there, but also just with the times that we're in. So we do have Division One here. Bruce Cusares, the Vice President of Operations, is here, and then also Brandon, I hope I don't do your name wrong. Tell me, Brandon.
Assencio.
Assencio. And they're both here representing Division One, so just letting you know that.
Any discussion on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, we're expecting a miracle out of that from a guidance center to a food service center. We're looking forward to it, but we know you can do it.
Don't forget, it was an administration building first.
Yes.
A long time ago.
That's where I started.
I'm not saying anything.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Construction update is for information only. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
So I do have a comment.
Okay.
Thompson, we talked about it, but I think it's only fitting for Kevin. Come up to the mic and tell them about a special guest in our audience that I think they'd want to know about.
Charles, if you could stand up. This is Charles Bourgeois. He's practiced architecture for 44 years, serving as a project principal and project manager on all types of educational facilities. 27 of those years, he has worked with PISD. As a project principal, Director of Education for GPD Architects, Charles has overseen all facets of project development and has provided quality, functional, and timely projects. Just to name a few of the major projects, Charles has been very involved in the new Thompson Intermediate School, the new administration building, maintenance operations and warehouse facility, May Smith Elementary School, Sullivan Middle School, Queens Intermediate, Gardens Elementary, San Jacinto Intermediate, Southmore Intermediate, the renovations of Carmen Orozco Professional Development Complex, and also multiple additions and renovations. So Charles has been a partner and a close friend to Pasadena ISD and to many of us personally, so we wish him the best in his retirement.
Charles. Charles, you're definitely going to be missed. You're going to be missed by all of us, and you're going to be missed by a bunch of kids. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Now you can say it. Who's your favorite superintendent?
That's okay. That's okay. Let's move to the miscellaneous section. We're not going to be adjourning to a closed session this evening, and so we're going to move on to, we're not doing reorganization this evening. So we're going to move to public comments. According to BED Local Related Topics, not listed on the agenda. And this portion of public comment is for speakers who are addressing topics not listed on tonight's agenda. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual student and/or employee should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others, and in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comment portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. Remember, this admonition goes for positive or negative comments. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and Ms. Rabe will be, I'm sorry, Mr. Phelan will be keeping time and will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. And Ms. Rabe, you may approach and begin speaking.
Good evening. My name is Yen Rabe. I would like to take a moment of silence for the victims of the Uvalde school shooting. Thank you. We hope the chief of police will carry out a thorough investigation of the issues uncovered in Uvalde regarding the police response. And as a public school parent and teacher, I support public schools. So I was not pleased to hear that the governor of Texas advocates for a private school voucher program when he spoke at a rally in San Antonio on May 9th. If what he says gets passed in legislation, school funding will follow students to charter schools and private schools. He added that school choice has a better chance of passing the legislation this session than before. He did mention that he'll leave it to the Texas legislator to hammer it out on how public schools will be fully funded. But how can public schools be fully funded when money dedicated to some students will leave to private and charter schools? How, now is the time that public school need more help, not less. Is our governor about defunding public education? Administrators, teachers, parents, and school board members, please speak to your legislators and professional organizations that you are a member of to advocate for more funding for our public schools. Furthermore, Pasadena ISD needs to be more proactive about getting into, out into the